The next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is the second and final public hearing on the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Relief Application for Activities That Prepare For, Prevent, and Respond to the Health and Economic Impacts of COVID-19. Commissioners, if it sounds like I'm reading a few bullets here, it's because I am, that are important to kind of get into the record in terms of the eligibility for this grant and to ensure that we are addressing these issues. So I will just hit a couple of these. Commissioners, we're submitting an application to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant in the Neighborhood Revitalization category. If awarded, the county will utilize these funds for the construction to renovate the Concord School Building at the Nikosuki community. And the county's application proposes project activities that will include elements designed to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Interior renovations such as touchless features, interior space reconfiguration, improved ventilation by replacing doors and windows, HVAC equipment, ducts, et cetera, are included in the project. Social distancing elements including exterior recreational improvements such as pavilions and picnic tables and new courtyard stage to facilitate outdoor program and outdoor classrooms are also included. Finally, Commissioners, at least 51% of the households within the project's scope service area will benefit from the project. It's estimated that low to moderate income households will benefit from this as this meets the HUD's LMI Benefit National Objective. Commissioners, we're recommending option one. We have no speakers on this item. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. County Administrator. Mr. Jackson, was that you with the motion? Mr. Maddox made the motion for option one, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Mr. Dozier.
Just great work. I know you all have been looking for funding in a lot of different ways. There's been a lot of work with Concord. I'm really glad this is moving forward. So thank you for that. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Vice Chair Proctor.
I wanted to hear from the district commissioner on this project and their thoughts because it's a long time, I think, in coming, and it's far more a greater amount of money than anticipated. But Commissioner Welch, your thoughts, I'd love to hear. If you wish to share.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. I've got Commissioner Cummings in the queue. Commissioner Welch, do you have any? Do you want? Commissioner Cummings. Let's do Commissioner Cummings and Commissioner Welch.
Oh, just thank you, Mr. Chair, very briefly. I'm not the... Well, I'm Commissioner at Large. I can't say I'm commissioning that district, but Commissioner at Large. But I certainly support this particular item. I think the individuals down in the Nikosuki will greatly benefit from this item, and I certainly support it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vice Chair, I obviously support this item, and I want to thank you because I know you've been involved in this issue for a while. I have not been involved in it for a while and certainly want to do everything I can for the folks of Nikosuki. And I know you've been engaged in this conversation for a long time, and I appreciate the county administrator and staff coming up with creative ways to help facilitate and fill a need for folks in the rural part of my district, which I have quite a bit of. And I appreciate and respect that and embrace that and happy to see this outcome at this point. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Any other speakers? All right. Let's see. Motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. With that, Commissioners, we have completed our scheduled public hearings. We are returning to general business. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce item number 22?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Item number 22 seeks your ratification of the board's action at the September 28th workshop on your state and federal legislative priorities. We have no speakers. Actually, we do not. We have one speaker on this item. It was going a little too quickly there, and we're recommending options one, two, and three. And our speaker is Melissa Villar.
Hello, Ms. Villar. Welcome back. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Melissa Villar, 169 Sinclair Road. So our 501(c)(3) is the holistic cannabis community, and that is, we are also hemp cultivators. So we wanted to be out there. We wanted to be bold. We didn't want to hide what we were doing. So recently, our bank account was closed. So we have to go through a rigorous process to finalize our application with the new bank because every bank has different policies. So we do appreciate your support for the ratification of the industrial hemp and the medical marijuana issues. And we are happy to report that we sent our letter of support with the Appalachian Regional Planning Council, the holistic cannabis community, North Florida hemp farms, and Pufferless to enter the agriculture manufacturing side for textiles, for fiber, for their economic development administrative administration Build Back Better Grant proposal. So we are very happy to be included as coalition partners. So I do just want to say that, you know, you can cultivate at home for personal cultivation. We did advocate for the free, no-cost hemp cultivation permits so we could have equity in the industry and so it could be treated like every other product, agriculture commodity that is not charged, from apiary to, you know, produce, vegetables, fruit and vegetables. So we did advocate for that. So, you know, and that is the way we brought equity to the industry because of the fact that the medical marijuana program, it's $60,000 to apply for a medical marijuana treatment center license to be a business. That is the main problem, what is blocking people from entering the industry because that only gets you into your application entered. That doesn't guarantee you are issued a license because there's a scoring card process. So the Department of Health, what we really need is your support, the county's support, to talk to the Department of Health because they really do not want to call back advocates like normal Tallahassee. Courtney Coppola, she would never return our calls, never return our emails when we wanted to talk about the business licensure application. So they really, the Department of Health had a... Their strategy was to avoid contact with the public and who wanted to make changes to their process. And that $60,000 application is enrolled with the Department of Health. So that is something that needs to change in order to bring equity because you know that the licenses were being bought and sold. Right now, you have 16 medical marijuana treatment center cultivators. You have 372 retail locations. We have 802 hemp cultivators and over 8,000 retail establishments in the state.
Great. Ms. Villar, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Commissioners, I've got Commissioner Maddox in the queue.
Who's staff recommendation?
Motion's been made for staff recommendation, which is option one, two, and three by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Any further discussion? I've got Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, I think it's covered in some of the items. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item seeks full board consideration of appointments to citizens to several of our committees. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to walk through. Option one seeks your consideration to appoint one citizen to the Canopy Roads Committee. The eligible applicants are listed there before you to include Curtis Chapman and Mark Jones.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to comment on a Coca appointment. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I took the gun a little bit there.
Sure, no problem. Commissioner Dozier, are you in the queue on this one?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I rang in for TDC and Coca as well. The Canopy Roads... Could we go on to Coca and TDC and we'll circle back to Canopy Roads in a second since we were chatting for that?
Yes, Commissioner Jackson.
Or unless you've got... Yes, sir.
Could we dispense with staff recommendation for option two and option five, considering it's a single...
I would second that. Motion's been made for option two and option five with the citizens that have been provided by staff. All in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Maddox, I believe, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so why don't we move on to number three? And I do have... Commissioner Welch, do you want... Okay, you were in the queue first for Coca.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to nominate Beth Keating, Mary Elizabeth Keating, for that spot. Just real quickly, Beth is an attorney, and I serve with her on the Foundation for Leon County Schools Board, and she is phenomenal, and I think she'd do a great job. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. The motion's been made for Elizabeth Keating, made by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, sure, yeah.
If we don't mind, just...
No, go right ahead. Commissioner Dozier.
This was a really hard decision. We had some phenomenal applicants from a wide selection of the community. And Commissioner Welch, I went back and forth between Josh Johnson and Mary Elizabeth Keating. She is fantastic, and I think she would be great on the board. I just wanted to say that we have been focused a lot on the diversity, and Mr. Johnson is working on the Greater Art for Greater Bond initiative right now and a grant from Bloomberg that we just received. And we don't have a lot of men on the board, which is rather something unusual, but we are heavily female. And this is absolutely no disrespect to Mary Elizabeth Keating. I mean, she would be a great representative. I just, this is something that the board has really tried to focus on, so I wanted to mention that at this point. And I think Commissioner Maddox, if you're going to jump in, I...
Yeah, on point, on point. Commissioner Dozier, was the recommendation from your board, Josh Johnson?
Actually, I will say that folks at Coca, we... All three were recommendations. But from staff, I mean, both of these people were highly recommended. So they would be happy with either Mr. Johnson or Ms. Keating. That would be fine.
Mr. Chair, I rescind my second and yield to the board's appointee. If somebody else wants to second, I know Ms. Keating too, she would be a very good member of that board. But Commissioner Dozier is on that, is our appointee, and so I don't want to jump in front of that. So I'll yield to her from the information that she received at the board meeting.
Understood, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Welch, your motion needs a second.
I'm willing to accept the will of the board. I obviously think Beth Keating is abundantly qualified and would... And I don't know Mr. Johnson, but I'm sure he is as well. So I will, you know, accept the will of the board, but I still want to maintain that motion and look for a second.
I'll second that motion for Mr. Welch.
Okay. All right, so the motion stands on the floor. Made by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Vice Chair Proctor.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Dozier.
These committee appointments shouldn't and typically aren't contentious. So I really just wanted to share more information because those are, you know, a lot of goals that this board shares and others. I just wanted to add to that that with the city appointments, the mayor's appointments, he did appoint three women, all minority women. So we are really looking at that. So, I mean, it's not on the county to meet these diversity issues, and certainly it should not preclude anybody else from being appointed to the board. So this was the motion. I just wanted to make that comment. So I will let that stand, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Vice Chair Proctor, final comment, sir?
To Commissioner Maddox, his thought on the institutional recommendation coming within, I have nothing against incest of boards that desire to seek a like kind of bird of its own feather. But one of the things which we're talking about with the governor of Florida is the autonomy of this board. And a recommendation coming from Coca does not negate the autonomy of this board to think independently for itself. We have so many committees, too many dominated with white males, period, all across this community on city, school board, you name it. So that this board would be dominated with mostly women, it certainly would be a minority among the many that are clustered and dominated by white men. So I don't see nothing wrong. And certainly, they've made a recommendation, but theirs is not a binding one. So Commissioner Welch has spoken very highly of somebody he knew, and I was sold on his conviction. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Any other comments on this item, on this option? Commissioner Maddox.
Not to prolong the conversation, I think, you know, when I'm looking at, I was the accident one, if you think back maybe a year or two, that asked for us to start considering the diversity of our boards and asking for the breakdown of male and female race and all that kind of stuff. And here we are, looking at it. Commissioner Dozier, I receive your comments and I'm clear, when I'm looking at four males, 10 females, nine white, four black, one Asian, you have an opportunity to place a black male on this committee that will make five males, five black. So I get it. That's why I yielded it to you because I know the board, like you said, the board is looking at diversity. Not to mention that the work he's putting in and all that kind of stuff into being fit for the board. I do think Ms. Keating would be an absolutely amazing addition, but seeing the work that he's put in and hearing from our appointee, I think Mr. Johnson would be as well. And we don't much get into contentious appointee for boards and stuff like that. But I think I'll be hypocritical if I didn't say to the board as a whole that as we move forward, let's do keep in mind and look at that piece that we talk about diversity because not only do we want it to represent... Those boards represent the professional realms of people who are actually qualified and able to provide value to those committees, but we also want not just geographical because he is a District One resident, but also racial as well as gender diversity and where we can, even sexuality diversity within those boards. So I didn't want to be... I didn't want to let this opportunity pass without saying that. That's kind of the spirit. So I appreciate Coca embracing that and trying to create that diversity within their committee. But Commissioner Proctor, you're right, we do have the autonomy. When it comes down to it, no matter what recommendations we receive, we have the final say who is appointed to the board. And so if there's no other nominations, I'll support Ms. Keating, but keeping in mind that on all of our committees that we start to really think about, looking at those numbers and embracing the diversity piece of it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well said, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Dozier, do you have a final point? Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. All in favor of the motion for Mary Elizabeth Keating for option number three, made by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Vice Chair Proctor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, we're now at option four. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to close out the last one, I'm going to get to a motion on this. Commissioner Proctor, these were all recommendations from Coca. So Coca absolutely supports all six of these nominations. They came through the board and the executive committee, so we are happy. And, you know, I don't think there's anything wrong with a woman-majority board. At some point, there will be majority women sitting on this board. Just going to happen someday. I'm confident. It does happen. So we'll be happy with, you know, a lot of women in the room at Coca. But yes, it is something we focus on, and to talk about it at this board is a healthy discussion. So with that, I will nominate Amanda Clements for the second seat on Coca. Thank you.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor for option four with Amanda Clements, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And that concludes our agenda item for number 23. Oh, yes, you're right. I'm sorry. My mistake. Yes, number one. Any comments, Commissioners? Take your time.
I have a thought, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the mission of the Canopy. I don't quite understand its mission. Can anybody explain what the Canopy Road Committee is before we vote on this?
Mr. County Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We've got a brief description before you hear that their purpose is to make recommendations to the city county commissioners on issues related to Canopy Road preservation and assist in coordinating efforts of the government, private sector, civics groups, and individuals in an effort to protect, maintain, and enhance our Canopy Roads. One of the things that we do as a practical matter, Commissioners, is we vet, in certain cases, any regulations that we may be considering at the government level with the Canopy Roads Committee and their stakeholders as a stop before it gets to this board. And we seek, again, their interest and recommendations that they may have on this. But again, that's their primary role, is the role that you see before you.
Well, to that, Commissioners, I believe that our Canopy Road people work antithetical to or in opposition of our transportation planning. And there's just simply no doubt that Old Bangbridge Road needs to be widened. There's no doubt Meridian needs to be widened, but it's a canopy canopy. Centerville Road needs to be widened, and we're talking about putting a change there. And Nikosuki Road needs to be widened, and we're talking about 1,000 jobs out there, that new plan out there, what do they think? 1,000 jobs coming out there. So the Canopy sits there, and dares anybody to cut a limb down or take down a piece of moss. This is just ridiculous. But it seems as if we keep appointing people who oppose the science, the traffic studies, and the continuing patterns, which the city's own water study that we went through, we saw the amount of pipes the city wants to shoot up there. We saw the amount of water and tanks they want to put up there. And we, you know, it's in their plan. It's before eyeballs. We can see it. And then we get some stiff, stale group that just talks about the trees and what all the planning is saying is going to be more growth going up there. I'm at the point that we don't need a Canopy Road Committee. I don't understand why we're not making sense. And that last little brouhaha we had with the thing that Commissioner Welch was talking about, that street up there, Lilani or some, that little street going through there, it's because nobody wanted to say a word about Centerville Road. You just couldn't say nothing because it's a canopy, canopy, canopy. And it's amazing to me how they can tell you that elected officials... I mean, look, Old Bangbridge Road is dangerous. It simply is dangerous. But because trees hang over it, nobody says a word because of them trees. It's dangerous, and it's growing. And I think that the Canopy Road Committee is doing a lot to squelch the common sense of transportation planning. And there is no one entity more dangerous to, in places of greater chilling effect upon the need for artery expansion, even on Thorpe Street. It needs to open, but that's not a canopy, Thorpe. And I'm just saying what I'm saying because we're talking about policy. And this body right here needs to be sunset. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Vice Chair Proctor. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Paused earlier because I wanted to look back at both Mr. Chapman and Mr. Jones' applications. They both looked like they would be interested in this position, didn't have a lot of details. But I would... So I think they both would be good candidates, but I would like to make a motion for Mr. Chapman.
Is there a second on the motion?
Thank you. And just the last comment here, this is committee appointments, so don't want to prolong a policy debate. But since it's been on the record, I think I've got to say that Canopy Roads are a critical asset in our community from my perspective. And mitigating the traffic impact from new development is just something we should absolutely focus on. We've talked about that. So I think that we could save that debate and discussion for another time. Or I should say, Commissioner Proctor, Mr. Vice Chair, you and I have had that discussion for 11 years. But I appreciate hearing your thoughts as always, and we'll just stick with the appointment, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. And Vice Chair Proctor, I respectfully disagree with you. I think having a Canopy Roads Committee is important. I think having that type of pushback, I think, is helpful to us. And I think Canopy Roads, in a large part, define a lot about what Tallahassee is. So I think a lot of people would probably respectfully disagree with you, sir. But we can have that discussion another time. There is another time for us.
They start road expansion. That's what they do.
All in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Cummings for Curtis Chapman to fill this position, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously, seven zero. All right, Mr. County Administrator, we are now at citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Are there any speakers?
Yes, there are, Mr. Chairman. I've got a number of speakers on non-agenda items. And the first is Freddie Miller.
Mr. Miller, thank you for being here, sir. Would you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Freddie Miller. I live at 6001 Shawmuck Street in District One. I'm here on behalf of our road condition. I'm glad you guys are talking about roads. I'm here on our road condition, our community. We live over off of Buttonwood. I think it used to be Southwood, but now it's Buttonwillow. I'm sorry. And it's a very bad situation over there for us. We have a lot of residents over here representing it. It's the emergency vehicle problems. We have sugar sand out there, mud, unpassable. And we pull like at least five cars get stuck out there per month in that road. And I'm just afraid that emergency vehicles are going to come through there and trying to save a life, and it's not going to be able to get to their destination or get out of there once they pick up the victim if that was to happen. God forbid that. But I think it's a responsibility of the county, even though the road is labeled maintenance, private maintenance of the road. But the school buses can't get through there. The kids have to walk. Close to maybe a half mile if they live all the way in the back, or their parents have to bring them up to the bus stop, which is another problem. The garbage truck can't get through there. UPS gets stuck frequently, also the mail truck. And we are taxpayers in that community, but we don't get anything for our tax money. So I'm not sure where the tax money is being allocated towards, but it's not going to our community, which I think that is very unfair to us. We talked to the public Works Department, I did anyway, and one of the representatives is here right now, and they offered us a program, which we were very much accept a program as long as it doesn't cost us any money out there in that neighborhood. Because like I say, we paying for water, we paying for emergency service, we paying additional money for fire trucks and all that. But I'm wondering where, what are you guys doing with our tax money that over 100 residents live out there? Over 100 homes are out there. I don't know how many residents it is, but we're paying a pretty good chunk of money out there, and we're not getting anything for it. And I would like to ask you guys to very much consider, Commissioner Proctor, that you would very much consider looking into this situation and act according to the saving of life out there in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Commissioner Maddox, do you have a comment, sir?
Yeah. I'm going to give it to Commissioner Proctor. I know there's a protocol. I know no one is more stickler for it than Commissioner Maddox. So I would like to address the comment under my time.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor.
Just real quick, before we do that, Mr. Administrator, what's the program? Just real quick, I just, before we do that, Mr. Administrator, what's the program, the blueprint program that we created with our?
Sure. I was just going to offer, Commissioners, there are five more speaker cards, but if you'd like, at the end, we've got Brent here from Public Works, and we could talk about the several programs that we've offered to the neighborhood, and we could explain it a little further here, kind of what we would need to do under the different programs that are available to the neighborhood. These are private roads, these are two private.
That's the question of, who else, who else here is going to speak specifically on this problem?
It appears to be the rest of the speakers.
Okay, so Mr. Administrator, what I'm asking is, if we could, if you could answer that question now, maybe it may?
Sure.
Yeah, let's do that.
Be happy to do that. Brent, could you come on up? And Commissioners, Brent is coming up, as you're all aware, and again, we can get into the details, we know that sometimes we all need a little refresher on our various programs that we have where we partner with neighborhoods on, in this case, private roads, our Two-Thirths Program that you're all well aware of, as well as our Life Program. But I'll ask Brent to come up, and I think that we've also got some road stabilization programs, that sort of thing, and Brent can talk about all those. But I understand there's been some conversations with the neighborhood, and I'll let Brent take it from there. So if you just provide us a little bit of an overview, Brent, of the, maybe some of the programs that the neighborhood may be eligible for.
So you have two subdivisions that they're talking about here. One is, I believe, Southwood Estates, the other one is Southwood Unrecorded. They are all private roads. Southwood Estates is paved, Southwood Unrecorded is all dirt roads. So the programs we can offer for the paved road would be the Two-Thirds Program. For the dirt roads, we have the Life Stabilization Program, which is a free program, and it's income-based. I was talking with citizens earlier tonight, I've got a bunch of emails, I'm going to send them all the information that they need for programs that we offer. Obviously, we have the private road repair program also, but that costs them money. I think the Life Program would be a great fit, assuming they qualify.
And Commissioners, with the Life Program, just, it still would require, even though it wouldn't require, it may not require financial participation, it would require agreement among a certain portion of the neighbors for us to come in and acquire right-of-way and to get a number of signatures and those types of things.
Right, and the Southwood Unrecorded does have dedicated right-of-ways, that makes that program a little bit simpler for that one. The Estates one does not have dedicated right-of-ways, it's all easement-based, and that'd be a little more challenging for the county to go forward with.
Commissioner Jackson's in the queue, and then Commissioner Maddox, you're next.
Thank you. Yeah, I may have missed this. What is the percentage required? Did I miss that, the percentage required for Life?
Nothing.
I want to say it was 60%, but I'm not positive. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Okay.
So in that Life Program, I mean, those funds were limited though, correct?
We, there's an allocation we get every year, so it's first come, first served. I don't know what the balance is right now, but I do know that we do have funds available at this time.
As I understand it, you said Life, one was for unpaved and the other one was for?
Right, the Life Program does not contemplate repairing paved roads.
So it wouldn't qualify for both of their roads?
No, so that's, I got two different programs I need to discuss with them. So the Estates will be getting, looking at the Two-Thirds Program, the other side will be looking at the Life Program.
Now, the gentleman, the gentleman just spoke, you're on the unpaved road, sir?
Yeah, he's in the dirt portion. Yeah, I was speaking with him already, last week I spoke with him.
So he would only qualify for the program as Two-Thirds?
No, the Life, the Life Program.
Oh, he would qualify for the Life Program?
Yes, sir.
So the paved roads is not, is not?
Right, they would not qualify for the Life Program, the paved roads.
Okay, great, all right. Thank you for entertaining the question. I think if we could just get the information to them, Commissioner Proctor, I'll just take the needle. I just want to understand, just from my recollection, what the programs were and how they mixed up, and looks like we're going to be able to get something done, Commissioner Proctor, with that Life Program. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, and Vice Chair Proctor. Mr. Miller, thank you very much. For your neighbors, would you still like to speak? We'll definitely sit here and listen to everything that you have to say. All right, let's go ahead and continue.
And Commissioners, as I call the rest of the names here, in addition to Brent collecting emails and that sort of thing, of course, I would just offer to the neighborhood that we'd be happy to come out to a neighborhood meeting or anything like that and discuss, you know, in a broader forum, any of these programs, all the programs that are available to them in the process, that we'd have to go through in order to do that and to make these programs available. But the next speaker is Jeffrey Cricks.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Cricks. Would you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes, sir.
Yes, my name is Jeffrey Cricks. The address is 6005 DeForest Street. I'm also one of the residents from this community. I've been there for four years, and I can honestly say that I have pulled out countless people of getting stuck in there. We have a severe problem with road erosion back there. Like the folks in the front section, they have the paved area. I couldn't even call that a paved road. There's probably five feet of pieces going throughout there. If that could possibly even go backwards and be eligible for that Life Plan or the First Plan, where they could just come in and peel up the pieces of that paved road and put down gravel, I'm sure that those folks would be grateful for that. Because it's so bad that we've actually had, in the dirt road portion, we've actually had a sinkhole that opened up in the middle of the road. We had, have cones put up around it, and people were trying to fill it in with the sand and everything. Most, I have personally been there and seen a fire truck and ambulance coming in there for medical emergency, and both vehicles spinning tires going through the sand, it's so deep out there. We get a rain, it smoothes it all out. But during the rain, we have a chosen few that live in the area that like to try to make it a mud bog, and they cause ditches and trenches down the middle of the road. Most of the roads though, back there, all the water runoff literally causes up to three-foot deep ditches in the roads, through the roads, where folks have to literally drive around, up through people's property to get out. As some of the gentlemen have said, the roads back there are impassable, they're a single-lane road. You've got to sit at the end of one road to be able to make it to the end of the other, let somebody in, let somebody out. It's, it is a situation where it is considered a danger for fire trucks, EMS, the postal service, everybody in and out. I have pulled out the U.S. Postal Service. I've been stuck.
Mr. Cricks, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, appreciate it, sir, for coming, for you coming out here. Next speaker, please. And just so everyone knows, for people that may be watching at home, these are two private roads, so they're not currently maintained by Leon County. Just want to make sure everyone here understands that. Uh, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next speaker is Asha Maharaj Lucas, and forgive me if I mispronounced her.
Hello, ma'am, how are you doing? Thanks for coming over. Would you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
It's Asha Maharaj Lucas, so you did a good job pronouncing, thank you. I would like to echo what my neighbors have said. I am actually one of the fortunate ones who live kind of close to the paved part of the road, but my property is often driven on by vehicles trying to avoid the ditches or the sand getting stuck. I've also lost part of my fence because people drive on my property. They have knocked over my mailbox, so I've lost mail service. The post office has actually refused to deliver to the house because they get stuck in the sand. Now we have, we're fortunate to have mail carriers who will get out of the vehicles and walk up to our property and hand us our mail. I don't know if my neighbors experienced the same thing, but it's a very difficult situation. I've lived there for 16 years now, and I have reached out to our neighborhood numerous times to try and get a consensus in getting the road paved and agreement of some sort. We do have a lot of people in the location who have, who own multiple pieces of property, and they're not interested in their taxes being increased just to have a paved road. Some of them don't even live here. They rent out their properties, and the people who live there are the ones that are going, the property owners who live there, I should say, are the ones that are struggling with this. Because our property is not only being damaged if, you know, it's not your home or your fence or your grass, it's your vehicle because it's being damaged and lost in sinkholes. So I would like to ask for any help that we can get in our situation, and thank you for your time and listening to me.
Thank you very much, ma'am, appreciate it. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next speaker, Valeria Varadi.
Hello, Ms. Varadi, thank you for coming all this way. Would you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Valeria Varadi. I live in the same neighborhood, and it's a long, long dirt road. My address is 5971 DeForest Street, and I have to go all down on the dirt road. I enjoy all the ditches, the holes, and after then it continues the dirt road, but finally I get home. A lot of time in the middle of this dirt road, fire truck, ambulance, mail carrier stuck in the mud, in the, because the sand is usually that high, that deep, so it's terrible. So we need any help and support from the Commissioners to get our road be nicer. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Varadi. Uh, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Julia Jones, to be followed by our final speaker, Glenn Howard.
All right, Ms. Jones, are you here? Okay, thank you so much, ma'am.
Glenn Howard?
Mr. Howard, thank you for being here, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Glenn Howard. I live at 5998 Buttonwillow Lane, and I'm actually in the Southwood Estates part, the front part, and we're the only asphalt road, or supposed to be asphalt. I've been there for 17 years, and it has gotten worse and worse and worse. The asphalt is basically 90% gone, we have huge holes on both sides of the road. Right in front of my house is two huge holes, which we've patched several times, neighbor, my neighbors have patched the road several times, only to get it washed up. Once you leave our road and go up to where they are, the other ones are, that's all dirt and sand, and vehicles are stuck every single month, every week, I mean, it's at least five or six. They have to pull out every month, it was just two in their last week they got stuck. School buses have gotten stuck, FedEx, UPS, I mean, it's really, really bad, it's gotten really bad. And anything that you all can do to help us, we would certainly appreciate it. It's just at a point where, like they were saying earlier, fire trucks come in, they have gotten stuck before, ambulances gotten stuck. Matter of fact, we had like three ambulances that came in there in the past two weeks, and it's to the point, you got to, if you start at Buttonwillow, which is our road, you have to like, just really fast, go really fast through to try to get through and pray and hope that you don't get stuck. And then even with that, you have to go onto someone else's property to try to even get through there. You know, it's just, it's really horrible, it's bad, it's real bad. So again, anything you all can do to help us, we would certainly appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Howard, thank you so much, and thanks to you, and thanks to all of your neighbors for being here and taking some time out of the evening to come and talk to us, really appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
And then Commissioner Dozier, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir, I have one question that, I don't think this one's come up in a while, but it's one that I think is, always presents a struggle, and that's the absentee landlords. I mean, that is a big issue. When you have neighbors, some owners, some renters, who are really willing and wanting to do the right thing in their neighborhood, and other landlords, you know, some landlords who don't live on property, may own multiple properties, or they hold up. And that does, we run into that issue, particularly when you have to get agreement from a neighborhood like this. From my perspective, this is a problem for our affordable housing, is a problem for safety, and the school buses, the mail, all of these basic services. And if one of our, you know, Leon County's fine, it's got, you know, had trouble getting through, I mean, that is concerning. Ms. County Administrator, or Mr. Chair, for the County Administrator and for the attorney, I'm not sure if there's anything that, or any programs or any similar, you know, issues or counties that have addressed this issue with absentee landlords, but that, I don't think that's one that we've really delved into, even though it's come up in other scenarios. And I'm just wondering, Ms. County Administrator, I see you nodding, if we can look at that issue and see if, for example, and I'll stop here, if we had agreement from all of the owners in the neighborhood and we just didn't have the landlords, is there something we could do? Because this could be a life safety issue.
Mr. County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, and I will defer to our county attorney, because she knows very well that this is a very well-worn area that we've dealt with over the years, and that these property owners do have certain property rights. And the issue for us is that on private roads, even though unlike our Two-Thirds, Two-Thirds Program where there may not be a financial contribution, we do need permission on private property to do that work and that sort of thing. And with that, Chastity, let me just defer to you to see if you have anything to add to that.
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's really always a fact-specific inquiry, because when you get in there and you start looking at the ownership interest in the areas that are used for right-of-way, it varies in every single case. In a lot, in a lot of the cases, the ownership comes to the middle of what they use for a right-of-way. Sometimes it's old leftover property that was owned by whoever developed the overall subdivision, but it's been so long that that parcel is still in the name of the old owner, and it's never been probated. I mean, every single one of these cases can be very, very different, but fundamentally, hence is correct, you have to have authority from the owners of the property. Otherwise, the county doesn't have jurisdiction and it's trespassing. So it would require an individualized analysis to determine what the ownership interest in the right-of-way just from the start, is what I would say. Because it's going to depend in every situation.
Um, Mr. Chair, thank you both very much. I know we've got another comment, that's the chair's discretion, sir, so I'll let flag me for him. But just following up on this, I'm wondering, in your discussions with the neighbors, if there are any resources, I don't know if this is something legal services in our Florida or some other group may help address property issues and ownership issues. I mean, this is a challenge that we run into a lot, cleaning up the titles and things like that, or even helping contact those absentee landlords. I just, I would like to understand that a little better. I knew there was legal issues for the county getting in and doing that work if we couldn't get landlords, but what other assistance, I mean, or is there anyone else out there who could help these folks if that is the issue we run into? That's my main question. So any options in the future, I would just love to hear about that, and I'm sure these folks would love to hear that as well.
Madam County Attorney.
Commissioner Dozier, we actually brought an agenda item back to the board fairly recently as a result of a request from Vice Chair Proctor to talk about local legal services that may be available to low-income property owners who have questions about real property, potential conveyance or probate issues associated with the conveyance of property that's been in their families for a while. I believe those same resources would be available potentially in this instance, depending on whether these residents qualify for those services.
Madam, Mr. Chair, Madam County Attorney, thank you for the reminder. The inheritance issue is, that is very similar, and cleaning up some of the same title issues at times. So you did bring us that report, it was a very good report, and I appreciate Commissioner, or the Vice Chair asking for that. So, yeah, if there was anything in those resources that may help in this situation, I would love to provide that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. And then, Mr. Miller, do you have a quick point, sir?
I'm not sure, Commissioner Dozier, that you understand what we're saying. This is not a low-income neighborhood. We pay, we, most of the people in here are homeowners, okay? My home is not on a low-income budget. So what we're talking about here is not pleading for help right here, we're talking about life and death situation. That's what all, everyone that came in here basically spoke on, being able to... That's what all, everyone that came in here basically spoke on, being able to have emergency vehicles and service vehicles get to our homes just like they do yours. So when you keep bringing up low income, I heard that come out of each one of y'all mouth a couple of times, that's humiliating to me.
That's not what I meant.
Okay? So don't try to twist it into we up here begging for something because we don't make any money because everybody here is either retired veterans or former business owners. And we have a pretty nice equity going on in our homes. So that's what we're asking you guys for, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. We gotta keep on going in the queue. You have a very quick comment, really quickly, please.
I simply did not mean to offend anyone. I mentioned affordable only because rentals, we need that for any income level and that, that's what I meant by affordable. I did not mean to imply anything different, sir, but that the rental and the landlord issue is the only thing that I was mentioning.
Okay, let's, let's move on, let's move on, let's move on. Mr. Miller, respectfully, please, let's, let's have the continue going on with the Commissioner's comments. And just, it's seven o'clock right now. Let me say what I said last time. Take as much time as you need to speak, but please take only as much time as you need to speak. We've got Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Maddox, and then Vice Chair Proctor. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank the homeowners for coming out, speaking to, speaking to us tonight about the problem, the situation. Just for clarification, though, Mr. Chair, I understand that this is privately-owned property where the road is located and it's my understanding that the impediment from the county going out, maintaining the road, is that there must be permission to do so. Is that correct? Even with permission is the county, if, if there is full permission, is the county permitted to go out and pave the road or repair the potholes and maintain it?
If there is under, under the life program for the dirt roads, if there is permission, if we get 100% participation among the owners, then yes, we can proceed with that program and make improvements.
Thank you. And I believe one of the county representatives or employees said we're working with the property owners through the light program, I believe he said. Do we know where we are now as far as permission? Do we have the signature line for most of the property owners and there's a couple where we can't locate the owners or where are we in the process or how long have we been in the process?
I'll ask, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioner. I'll ask Brent to come on up. I get the sense that we're not far, that far down the road, no pun intended on this issue. Let me just say, though, while I'm, while I've got it, that, and for the neighborhood to know this, we, we recognize that those roads are in disrepair. We'd, we'd like nothing more than to go in there and, and do that work. Again, we're, and we've got a couple of different programs, which is good, not, not all counties even have these programs, we've got on the books to do this. And we recognize that our two-thirds program, you do have, where we will come in and pave them, bring, bring those roads up to county standards, that that does come with a fiscal impact to the participants. We get that and, and this board's been through that in the past. Let me just say to the neighborhood as well that, you know, we can structure that, that debt or those assessments over a long period of time to try to, again, try to minimize that impact and that sort of thing. That's under one of the programs and under the life program, again, as we talked about, that would be, that would be a no-cost program, but it would require 100% participation of the, of the private owners for us to be able to go in there and make those improvements. But with that, Brent, do you have anything to add to what Commissioner Cummings asked us about in terms of where we might be in the process?
We're just at the very beginning, so we have not connected, we have not identified all the property owners, we have not identified all the signatures needed, so we have just started that. We're evaluating the subdivision right now for the work that would be needed and to get the signatures gathered up.
Can I have a follow-up?
Yes, ma'am.
Have we identified the number of property owners and the number who we need, who we still need permission from?
No, we're, we're still evaluating all that.
So we don't have an idea of the property owners?
No, because you have two, you have two different situations.
Okay.
The one subdivision with the dirt roads has right-of-way, platted right-of-way with a dedicate, which we, is an unrecorded subdivision, so we gotta look at the plat to see who it was dedicated to. The other subdivision has property lines to the middle of the road, so that was, that's a whole different challenge trying to get permission there. The other one, we have right-of-way, all we need based on our program is just to get homeowners to apply and, or task for it, get enough signatures, we can go on that one.
So thank you. So we're dealing with two different subdivisions?
Yes, they're side by side and so they're easily confused, but one actually has the crawl pavement. It is broken up pretty badly, the other one's all dirt.
Okay. And one last question.
Sure, go ahead, ma'am.
Is there anything, Mr. County Administrator, or anything that we have that could expedite this process because I understand, you know, the health, safety issues, the ambulances trying to get in and out, even with the homeowners trying to get in and out for whatever, for whatever reason. So is there an expedited process that could be employed to try to assist these, these residents and property owners?
Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. I'll go back to something Chastity said. I would never want to overpromise and under-deliver here. We've got a sense of urgency. Again, we'd like to get out there to the neighborhood. It's not at all uncommon for us to be at this point in the process and, and have sort of the situation that we're, we're dealing with now. Sometimes it takes us to, to go to the neighborhoods and, again, explain the options and the available and to say, do you all want to avail yourselves of either of these programs? And if the answer is yes, we can very quickly identify all the properties that would be impacted in our process for, for getting the information. Our, our side of the process is, if you will, is pretty quick if you have participation. And that's the big if, because if, if, if you have participation or if you have ownership issues underlying some of the property owners, that's where you get into the, to the time issues, unfortunately. Again, if it were a, and I'm not suggest, but if it were a two-thirds, two-thirds program where we came in and did a paved improvement to the road, it, it could tend to be a lot faster than that if, because I believe our petition threshold is, is lower on that program, is it not?
The two-thirds program requires 75% of the sign-on, but we need 100% of the right-of-way to be done.
Got you, okay.
So is that the program where the property owners are assessed a certain amount, they are assessed a certain amount on their utilities or on their taxes?
Yes, as a, as a special assessment, yes.
But we still have the same problem of identifying the property owners and we have some where we have.
Sometimes it can be, sometimes it can be really quick in a neighborhood where you quickly get to your thresholds and you're off and running. And sometimes, as, as some of the members of this board know over the years, we've dealt with two-thirds programs that have, have taken many years to accomplish. So again, it really just depends on the level of participation.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. I've got Commissioner Maddox, Vice Chair Proctor, and Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank the neighborhood because you got here at the beginning of the process. A lot of times you have people that come along towards the end of the process and we, there's not much we can do, but because you're here bringing, bringing to us the urgency of this matter at the beginning of it, I guarantee you that you will see a much quicker pace in getting done what you're trying to get done. The second part is I want to thank staff for, for, for jumping in, Ms. Administrator. I know you guys are going to take care of this in a timely fashion. I think the thing that we have to understand here is that we can only go as fast as you allow us to go. The, the process will, will, will move as, as far as you are, as quickly as you allow it to move in getting the petitions together and, and making a selection about which program that you want to be a part of. Now, for those that are on a non-paved road, as I understand it right now, I think that's you, sir. I think you said your road was not paved. You qualify for the life program and there will, there will be no, be no assessment. I, I think that the thing that, that kinda, that makes me question a little bit is for the gentleman, I think it's Glenn, I think it was, he's, he's on a paved road that ain't really a paved road. I mean, it's so, it's so majorly damaged that you, I mean, you can't even identify it as paved, but we're going to qualify it as paved and he's going to have to have an assessment there. I've been here almost 11 years and this is the first time I ever thought of this question as I'm trying to problem solve here and it's probably, you know, that dumb question in me in class and there's no such thing as a dumb question. We often see county properties annexed into the city. My question is, is there a process by which a private road can become a county-maintained road? And I see Alan cringing over there, just hear me out for a second. Is there a process by which that can happen and what is that process? And I'm wondering if these folk, if these good folks say, I don't mind my, my, my road being the county road, I just need to know the process by which it's done in order to get there.
It is, Mr. Chairman, it is the two-thirds process.
That's the two-thirds. So at that point, it becomes a county road, okay? And then after that, two-thirds is paid off and then from that point on, there's no more assessment to it?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so, and there's, and that, that two-thirds could be stretched out as long as possible?
As long as possible. We bring back financing options to the board.
With the life program, once the life program is implemented and that, that road is paved, is that, does that become a county-maintained road as well?
Whether, whether it's paved or improved, so.
Paved or improved, it becomes a county-maintained road?
In that case, I think it could stay a private road, yeah.
Okay, all right, all right, great. Thanks for asking that question. So I wanted to say, I just want to, I want to emphasize to the neighborhood, if staff comes out there and starts to have the conversations and ask the questions, please assist them as much as you can so this process can move. We can't do anything that you don't allow us to do, whether it's on the right-of-way or agreeing to which program that you want to do, need to be a quick consensus. And it looks like you guys have a good synergy of folks here. I can imagine how many more that didn't come during your neighborhood or on board with this. Go ahead and get together now and start having a conversation. You got two programs. For those who are on the paved, on the paved road, you got the two-thirds programs, that's all you got. For those on the unpaid road, you got the life program. Start getting people to start agreeing with it and moving forward with it now or else, like, like Mr., like the Administrator said, we're going to be here six months to a year from now, you're going to have the same exact problem and it won't be our fault. It'd be because the neighborhood can't agree on what they want to do. That make sense? And as much as we can help, we're going to help, but I know my staff, I know our staff won't, won't require us to help as long as everybody does their part. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well said, Commissioner Maddox. We've got Vice Chair Proctor and then Commissioner Jackson, and then I'll wrap it up.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, does the state of Florida prohibit Florida's counties from maintaining private roads?
Madam County Attorney.
I don't know the answer to your question. I haven't researched this issue. It's really more a function of we have to have authority to enter onto the property to make improvements. And if we don't own the property, we have to have that authority from the property owner, whoever that is, whether it's one person or 500 people.
So on our two-third, two-third program, why is it that we can proceed if two-thirds of the people combine the one-third who don't want to go forward and we combine them to a tax to reimburse the county for paving the road? But on the other program, there has to be 100% while there's such a discriminatory basis of required consent.
Madam County Attorney.
Vice Chair Proctor, I don't know the background or how those percentages were developed. Fundamentally, though, no matter who ultimately owns the road, even if it's just an easement to get access to the property to make improvements, at some point, you still have to have authority from a property owner, no matter who ultimately owns the road, period.
So if we have two-thirds of the owners to sign up, what is it about two-thirds that gives us eminent domain power to go ahead and do what we got to do for the third that didn't sign on? We exercise eminent domain authority with that two-third trigger and I don't understand why you got to have 100% and we act as if we're totally impotent with respect to our right of eminent domain if it's something we have to do.
Madam County Attorney.
We can come back with more information to the board if you would like, but ultimately, I think it, in some respect, comes down to, under the two-third program, the county takes ownership of that right-of-way and it maintains it into the future. Under the other program, which I'm admittedly not really familiar with, it sounds like the county does not take ownership of that property going forward. It just has to have sufficient permission from the property owners to go on to make improvements to the property.
Vice Chair Proctor, if I can make a recommendation, if you have any more questions about the policy of two-thirds or life or any other type of related issues, could I ask you to have a meeting with the county attorney and talk about it offline?
No, you can't because you've heard from everybody.
Well, because we're talking about the, the essence and details of the programs. When the programs are going to be discussed with the neighborhood and that, that process is just starting with them right now.
I hear what you're saying.
In the interest of expediting the meeting and making sure that we're making the best use of everybody's time, I'd like to ask that you please try to wrap up your comments and if you have any further questions, please meet with the county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I think that you've not told anybody to expedite what they got to say. My comments are, are a stance of thought on these roads, of which they're federal, they're state, they're county, they're city, and they're all governed by different rules, different sets of rules. And those people who are most oppressed when it comes to making a sidewalk, a light, are the glowed and, and, and graded, are people who are on so-called private roads. But why do we charge these people county tax and we're not there? Why must they pay these things and a king goes out and assess their houses? So my, 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 my questions are related to what I'm hearing, what I'm feeling. That won't be the same in a room with my witness right here because a, a part of my thoughts are streaming from what I've heard tonight. But if you insist that that's what I got to do, damn, I'll do it.
Mr. Chair, could I, could I just?
Yes, Madam County Attorney.
So Vice Chair Proctor, Kyle Kemper, who's also here, very helpfully pointed out, and so I'd like to clarify since you used the phrase eminent domain, we do not take property by eminent domain under the two-thirds program. 100% of the property owners of any right-of-way have to dedicate that to the county. We do not exercise eminent domain as part of that program. But I'm happy to bring back any additional information to the board about those programs that the board may like.
Chairman, I've got one more question to ask tonight. Wouldn't the issue of public health and public safety triumph over the idea of a private road? What we, what these people are talking about, Mr. Miller, is talking about is public health and safety and we're talking about we can't do nothing because it's a private road. Well, the public EMS is going down the private road, the public fire department is going down there. I think I heard the word UPS, I think they private going down the private roads. I guess we're not responsible for them. But wouldn't public health triumph over and give us a compelling reason to, to lay aside the notion of a private road or do we selectively use this to deny helping a community that's asking our help?
Madam County Attorney.
Vice Chair Proctor, I can just repeat what I've already said to you, but the answer is going to be same.
That's all right. I heard what you said. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. You know, listen, we can stay here until midnight. I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
I know, but don't be rushing.
But one option, one option is if you wish, Vice Chair Proctor, through a question agenda, come back, let's review of this. We could do that. Would, that way you could read it, we could all read it.
These people have taken out their life and time, energy, their afternoon to come down here tonight and they're here.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's just kind of to extract.
And they have.
Understanding for the.
And our public work department is going to be working with them.
I don't feel good about you frustrating answers coming forward. They don't feel good about you disallowing answers to come forward. So this is a wash, you know? And as, as, as the Administrator said, this is an area in our county which we do not want to overpromise and under-deliver because we have self-imposed, it's two-thirds, we've self-imposed when it comes to the private road thing, everything we can do. Now, I sat with you all the other day and, well, you weren't there, Commissioner Jackson was on the phone. We figured out how to give a state university $20 million for a stadium. We done figured out how to give another university $10 million for a stadium. These people is asking, can we get a road that not to tear up that lady yard and people getting out and for, for fire trucks not to be spinning wheels? And I don't think it's going to take 20 million or 30 million dollars we put in a stadium. But sometimes we can do the big things. Private companies can go all the way up in space, we just can't fix a little dirt road.
Vice Chair Proctor, I think you and I are talking circles around each other. We, we both want the same thing of what's being done right now.
What's the resolution? What is the resolution?
Vice Chair Proctor, please, it's my, it's my turn. Vice Chair Proctor, please, it's my, it's my turn, I have the floor.
Yeah, okay, what is our resolution tonight?
What's being done right now is, is, uh, our public works department is working with the neighborhood to address this. They just started this. Um, I wanna find, I think we all wanna find out how this progresses. What I would support, I would second this motion in a heartbeat. If you wanted to bring an agenda item back that discusses these issues for this neighborhood as, as well as a general sense, so that we can read about it, hear from what the county attorney might add to that agenda item, and then make maybe some policy decisions on how to address these areas that you're talking about, private roads that are dangerous, that are not being addressed, that are not safe. They're not our roads, they're, they're private property, we don't maintain them. But we can discuss some of the policy ideas we might want to talk about to address this problem that we're, we're spending time on. I'm also, I'm all for it. If you have that motion, I will second it. I can't make a motion as a chair.
I'll still move.
I'll second that, that motion.
Wait, wait, before we move, uh, second further, can I have an on-point question? Mr. Administrator, can you speak to what we're asking to come back? Because this is, it's innovative for sure, but I, can you speak to it, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's, thanks, I just wanted to acknowledge something that Commissioner Proctor said too. I mean, I, I think, because I think Commissioner Proctor and the rest of this board, I think when, when you approved the life program, uh, the intent of that went to exactly what Commissioner Proctor was talking about, to provide basic infrastructure for folks for health, welfare, safety issues. And when you developed that program, he said, and we'll pay for all of it under the life program. And, and, and however, in, in working with the county attorney's office, again, what you've heard is there's just some legal requirements that we have to achieve, uh, uh, in dealing with, with private property. I hate to say those are just details, but those are the details that we work with the neighborhood on. So again, if, if life is an option for folks, we'll go in there, we'll make the improvements, we'll do it as long as we have participation am- among. And again, we'll make those, those, um, those improvements to come up to that basic level of, of, of vehicles being able to get into the road and people to be able to safely traverse those roads. However, if on the other hand, people wanted to bring a, a, a private road that was in disrepair up to a higher standard, up to a, up to a county standard, maybe it's curbs and gutters, maybe it's a lot of different things, that's when, when we have a two-thirds program that would allow people, again, with some level of participation to go in eyes wide open and say, hey, look, here's the level of investment we want to make in our road. And we understand that that's gonna require, uh, some participation financially on our part upfront. Uh, but again, after that is paid off, so to speak, the, the county would, would, uh, would maintain that in perpetuity. The reason that you have that is today, uh, today, we don't, we don't allow private roads to be permitted and, and built in Leon County. These are, this is things that happened under previous, you know, development that historically have happened. And today, when a road is built, people that are buying those houses pay for those improvements. It's built into the cost of, of their new homes. And so, you have to treat, and so when you ask, why is it that you would charge people for this on a public road, is it, you have to, to, to treat similarly situated taxpayers the same under the law as well. And so that's why we have all these programs. Again, we're happy to come in and, and break these down in the gen item and explain those more. And, um, and, uh, and, and at the same time, uh, concurrent to that, uh, again, happy to convene the neighborhood, work with them, go through the options with them, and, um, and see where we end up.
Mr., Mr., thank you, thank you, on point, still, Mr. Chair, I'm trying, I'm trying to wind down, I know you're trying to get out of here. Um, is this more of a workshop than an agenda item, though? Because as, as I'm hearing it, Mr. Administrator, I, I don't, it seems like there's a lot of detail in this we need to dig into, and I don't, I, I, I would rather, hold it.
There's really no, since these programs exist currently, again, if it was the board's desire, but since these programs exist, we don't, we really wouldn't be seeking any, any, any additional guidance from the board and that sort of thing. I think we could relatively simply, again, just provide a reminder, explain to the board what these programs are and how they work and, and what we would do with the citizens, unless, and, and also in the agenda item, we could provide.
Okay.
You opportunities if there are policy changes that you wanted to, to make that are within, that are available to us under the law.
Let, final, final, I, I'll support the agenda item, but I'll tell you this, I do agree with the piece here, and it didn't make sense to me until you said it, Mr. Administrator. When someone builds a house, they pay for the infrastructure that goes in when they, when they buy that house. So, so for instance, if you're, if you're on a private road, that, that road is private because I mean, that house is built, the infrastructure wasn't paid for to be put in, the roads, sidewalks and all that kind of stuff. So it's kinda like, you know, if, if, if we're gonna come in and do that, then you go ahead and pay your piece of the cost of it, and then after that, if we're gonna stretch it out as long as we can, it might be $10 a month or $10, or $100 a year, but we're gonna stretch it out as, as long as we can. And then after you finish paying the initial investment in, in, in building the infrastructure, then you just continue to pay your taxes and we're all good. I, I, I agree with that approach, and so I wouldn't make any changes to the program given the fact of, that is fair. Because if I build a house on a, on a, on a county road, I mean, on a, on a county road, I'm already paying for that. But versus if I build on a private road, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not paying for that at all, so. Um, I, I'll, I'll go with the agenda item, but I'll, I'll, uh, I, I can't say I disagree with that, with the, with the premise of that, uh, that, that policy.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I've got Commissioner Jackson and then Commissioner Cummings and, uh, Vice Chair Proctor to wrap it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I really was gonna sit on my hands, uh, for this one, because everyone has talked it, um, over and over, but as the only sitting county commissioner that lives on a private, non-county maintained dirt road, I feel your pain. And for 33 years, I have driven down Taquen Drive, look it up, Google it. Um, I don't have three foot, someone said they had three foot mud holes. Mine's stopped at about two foot. And yes, people drive into my yard as well. In that time, I've tried at least a dozen times, 41 different homes. When we first moved in, it was only about 16. 41 different homes and the greatest number of people we could get to participate was 31. But those 10 that didn't participate prevented any improvements from being made that were long-term improvements. However, I agree with Commissioner Proctor that anything that jeopardizes the health, safety and welfare of county residents does not get stopped nil at it's not a county maintained road. If there's anything we can do, I know that our staff will work with you as hard as they can. And believe me, I feel your pain. I, in fact, I had the high ground. Someone talked about they have, um, one person has to go through before the other person can. Well, try it out on a stretch of like a half a mile, um, and several curves in between. So somebody's gotta have the battle on who's gonna put it in reverse. Um, but again, I feel your pain and I know where you're coming from. I hope I didn't misspeak. Does anyone else live on a dirt road? Okay, sorry, Madam Attorney. I, I, I feel your pain. And, and I too am concerned at times about my neighbors that live further down that have those same needs. Whatever we can do, I know that we will support.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Cummings.
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair. Just for clarification, so if the agenda item is brought back, um, will it include information, Mr. County Administrator, specific to the two subdivisions that we're talking about, the two different residences?
Mr. County Administrator.
We will do that.
It will, okay, good. And, and the status of, and pro, and the, the progress of where we are as far as giving them some relief?
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Vice Chair Proctor.
Uh, Commissioners, uh, from a policy standpoint, uh, let me ask, does the county approve these subdivisions? Uh, somebody just goes out there.
These are previous, as Brent said, this is a previous, I think, recorded and unrecorded subdivision, yeah. And so, again, Brent, you wanna come up and, and talk a little bit about that, but, but again, today, if homes wouldn't be permitted under our, under our existing.
Is this, is this, Brent, is this a, um, uh, uh, subdivision that was approved by the county or PUD or something?
It may have, but I, I mean, it's, I believe it's at least 40 years old, so it's predates, I believe, our land development codes. So I'm not sure what the approval process was at the time when this went through.
These may have been subdivisions that were recorded in the property appraiser's office.
Right, that's, that's, that's one of the challenges I'm gonna have is finding the plat on this one.
Well, if, if, if these were not, um, approved county subdivisions, uh, then the private, uh, persons somewhat assume the risk, uh, that come with the subdivision not being brought infrastructurally to the level that the county would have approved. So, if the county had approved a subdivision and allowed for zigzagging streets and bunch of sand, to me, the county would have some liability, uh, because we approved it and this should have been soil test, um, conducted to make analysis of the kind of dirt, uh, sand, mud, whatever. And the county should never make, uh, and approve a subdivision that does not have adequate transportation, that, uh, allow for EMS. And I don't know how heavy they weigh, I think they weigh, I mean, they cost $250,000, I read. Uh, but we should, we could never ordain a subdivision that cannot accommodate, uh, the, the mail truck, the school bus, uh, EMS and all of them. And that's why, to me, uh, the issue, Mr. Miller, in members' community, uh, whether or not this was an approved county subdivision, but even recognizing that some things should be grandfathered, I think, as you heard Commissioner Jackson say, that public health and safety, a safety issue here, uh, being able to have access to EMS which you pay for and it can't get to you, is a compelling reason why the county should step up and, and, and really flex to help alleviate this. I hear great consensus, me and the chairman just talk like this sometime, we just, you know, little family talking, so don't pay us no mind, we good for him. And, um, in fact, I'm gonna give my fist pump right there, right now. And, uh, but this is just how we talk, you know? Uh, but it don't mean a thing. And, um, I feel the heat and the weight and support of this board, and I'm sure that our public works director feels the same thing. In other words, um, we like, uh, we down with you like four flat tires, we with you on this right here. Mr. Miller trying to say something.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Um, so, just ask a, a quick question. Uh, Commissioner Cummings, your motion would include also the, within the agenda item, the, the issue of, of essential services, emergency services in private roads that, that may be impassable, correct?
Absolutely.
So that's part of your agenda item, is, is how we would address the needs of this neighborhood as well as other neighborhoods that might be in a similar situation?
Right.
Okay, okay, great, because that's very important.
And I, and Mr. Chairman, if, if I could just, I don't, I don't wanna further confuse things, but just so you have all the information, uh, since we've, we've exhausted it, we, we do have a program which is just simply for emergency purposes only, where we will go out and fill potholes and that sort of thing. Uh, it's not a road improvement project, it is specifically to ensure that emergency equipment can access those vehicles, and we do that, that's another program that we offer.
Do, does that include sinkhole? I heard the gentleman say a sinkhole open up in the street. I mean, I mean, is, is the private sector expected to fix the sinkhole? He said that, I heard that.
Yeah.
We, we do that?
Listen, go ahead, Brent.
Threat to the traveling public, we'd absolutely address that. But if it's something that could be negotiated around very safely, then, and typically, that would not be part of the emergency repairs.
Alright, so Commissioner Cummings. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I should meet.
Yeah, alright. Thank you all very much. Um, Mr. Miller, Mr. Cricks, uh, Ms. Asha, I, I didn't wanna try to pronounce your last name, uh, Ms. Veradi, uh, Mr. Howard, and there was a woman that declined to speak. Uh, I just, I wanted to thank, I wanted to recognize each of you individually, and thank you for taking the time to be here. Um, sometimes people feel like government just, is, is, is the inertia, you can't get anything done with government. But I really wanna tell you that your time here this evening is, is well spent. And I, I don't know what the end result will be, but I know you're on a really good track and you've got a really great public works department here that's gonna be starting this process with you. And, uh, so, it, it makes a difference. So thank you all very much to each of you for being here and taking the time. Really appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, we do know what the end result will be.
What's that?
End result will be your problem will be fixed, one way or the other.
Yeah.
That's the end result.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, Mr. County Administrator, we have no other additional speakers, is that correct?
Uh, we do not.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we are now on, uh, items from the county attorney, Madam County Attorney.
Mr. Chair, I, I think we had a motion pending about.
Oh, that's right, we didn't go on the motion, that's right. Uh, all in favor of the motion, um, made by Commissioner Cummings and seconded by myself? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Okay, Vice Chair Proctor, you voted in the affirmative, right? Okay, the motion passes unanimously, 7-0. Um, Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two items for the board this evening. Uh, the first is, uh, a memo was distributed to you, um, Friday about an opioid litigation related matter. Um, in brief summary, um, outside counsel and the national consortium have advised and recommend filing a complaint against McKinsey &amp; Company, Inc. Um, in that case, uh, McKinsey is a global management firm that was hired by Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family, uh, to expedite the sale of opioids, uh, over a number of years. They were, uh, successful in doing so, actually tripling sales during that timeframe that this company worked for, that pharmaceutical company. Um, it's, several years ago, uh, the state sued this, uh, marketing firm and have reached settlement, but that litigation did not involve any local governments. So, uh, what our outside counsel is proposing and recommending is that we agree to join in litigation with other local governments, um, against this marketing firm as well, uh, with hopefully the end result is a settlement as well. But that would be my recommendation to the board to authorize our outside counsel to, to join that litigation.
Yeah, Commissioner Maddox has made a motion for approval, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Uh, any discussion? Commissioner Maddox, do you want to speak on this? Alright, all in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, Vice Chair Proctor, are you voting in the affirmative, sir?
Yes, sir.
Alright, motion passes unanimously, 7-0. Uh, next item, Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the second item is, as you're, uh, probably all aware, um, the, uh, city did, pardon me, the county, did receive a, a, a communication today. Uh, it's dated October 6th, um, and we still have not received the certified mail as referenced in the document, uh, but, uh, it was titled Notice of Violation. Um, it's the communication we've been expecting from, uh, the Department of Health, which is asserting that, um, the county violated the statute and its rule, um, as, it's part of its implementation of its employee vaccination mandate. Um, I'm authorized to, to defend the county, and that does not require any further action of this board, uh, unless the, the commission does not want me to defend the county, which I'm assuming, um, is, is not an option. Um, but we would be proceeding, uh, to do that and to defend the county in this, um, case, which is where they're, uh, proposing to impose fines. Um, if the board wants to get into more detail about litigation strategy or bases, uh, for what we would do in defending the county's position, um, I would just ask that the board authorize me to schedule a shade meeting to come back and bring more information to the board at the appropriate time.
Madam Attorney, say no more. Mr. Chair, can you, can we, I, I would make a motion that we authorize the, the county attorney to arrange a shade meeting. I think this raises to the level and I think we need to have this conversation, uh, in, in the shade, uh, versus right here, right now. So I, I would make a motion that we authorize the county attorney to call a shade meeting. You said if it, if it rises to the level.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier.
We're in a discussion.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, there were other, I'm not sure if others were in queue to speak, but I'll let you handle that. Um, I think a shade meeting is appropriate. Um, Mr. County Administrator, Madam County Attorney, I think, I guess I would like to take this opportunity to say, we have been anticipating some response from the state and under your guidance, um, we have seen a lot of comments and questions come in from the media and a lot of folks in our community that have shared their perspective on this. Um, I think, for my part, I'm sure most of us have held back because this is a legal issue for the county. Um, so I will stay in that pocket, but for tonight, since we do have this topic on discussion, I wanna publicly thank our legislative delegation, um, for their statements today, um, in support and a lot of others. And I really, I, I stand by previous comments, but I think this is the right approach and I look forward to the discussion and moving forward with this. Um, I think you all have handled this very well in recent weeks and I anticipate nothing less going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Dozier. Any other comments? Vice Chair Proctor. Vice Chair Proctor.
Um, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to suggest that inasmuch as Commissioner, um, Maddox's motion for a shade meeting, uh, is apropos to this situation, that we, um, encourage and advise the county administrator, and I'm sure the county attorney will not be speaking publicly, uh, on this matter, but I would like to advise our county administrator to, um, to not feel that he has to defend, uh, anything in that, uh, advisably, uh, that he would, um, would, um, cease and desist, uh, any public comment until we have, um, huddled up and gone into the locker room. Um, I, I just think that the team needs to huddle up and get in the locker room before either of you make any declarative statements about our position until we know what our position is. Uh, I would just, don't need a motion, but just would advise that you consider that thought.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. County Administrator.
If we don't know what the county commission's position is at this point, we should, because you all have affirmed that, have given us such directions, so we believe we know exactly what the county commission's position is, but I think, again, if, uh, if it's advisable for us to get to a shade meeting to discuss legal strategy, and I don't want to go too far, because I know it's only permissible under certain--
Madam County Attorney.
--but I would, I would defer to Jaski.
Right. I mean, the, the county attorney's office position is we're going to defend, and we are going to fight the imposition of those fines and any payment of a fine.
No.
Um, the, the point of a shade meeting would be, though, if the board, if we get far enough on, along in the litigation where there are questions, whether there's a proposal, offer of settlement, for example, or something like that, where we would need to get input or answer questions from the board, we would definitely want to do that in a shade meeting. That is an acceptable, completely legal attorney-client communication about a litigation matter. What I don't want to do is prejudice the county's position by answering any questions or offering anything in detail about a, a pending litigation matter, because that is exactly where we currently are.
Mr. Chair, can I add a question?
Uh, hold on, hold on, Commissioner. Uh, I would like to see us--
Vice, Vice Chair Proctor, you're not in the speaker's key, sir.
Huh?
You're not in the speaker's key. Commissioner Dozier, uh, and then--
I was, I had the floor.
Okay.
I was, I, I was talking--
Go ahead, go ahead, you're right.
Okay. Um, I would like to see us meet as soon as possible, maybe next Tuesday, and I don't think public notices are, or a shade meeting, I don't think, is it? And if so, uh, I'm available to meet next, next week, Tuesday, and it gives time to prepare your notes, and it gives us a week to, uh, get in that room, because there are definitely some things I, I'd like to say.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that, Vice Chair Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, on point, I would ask that you reiterate, no, I'll do it for you. The purpose in us having a shade meeting is so we don't get into specifics on the dais. If you have a question in reference to the shade meeting specifically, cool, but please don't talk about specifics, about as to what we're gonna do, how we're standing and all that kind of stuff, because there's no point in having a shade meeting.
Agreed.
So, so let's, let's keep it on just the shade meeting conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just to clarify what the motion is, we, Madam County Attorney, at such time as we need to have a shade meeting to discuss this, I mean, this has just come into your office, so you're going to be working through the details, so it may not be next week, but it will be at some point if and when we need to have those, that conversation. Is that correct? Or, I'm trying to--
That is what I would recommend, yes.
Okay. So, um, Commissioner Maddox, you made the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just want to clarify that we are in line with what the county attorney's recommendation is, that when she is ready to have that shade meeting, then we have it, that it's not, you know, pressure to get in there immediately. I agree with you on the details. Um, my comments were more about any public statements in regards to this on, now active. We've been anticipating some action from the state, and now it is pending litigation. So I have held back on my comments, um, just of support of the county administrator's, um, decision and our decision to defend, um, this position. And so I'm going to keep my comments to the dais, and then in the shade meeting, um, and that is the only reason why I wanted to add extra tonight. It is not the details of the case, it is just to appreciate that support that's come from others and to compliment the hard work from our county administrator and county attorney now and in the future. Thank you.
Vice Chair Proctor.
Um, County Attorney, in that shade meeting, could you please prepare for us as I've attempted to visualize, um, the causes of action, uh, that are leveled against three, uh, local entities of government in Leon County? The Leon County Commission, uh, the issues that the city of Tallahassee is grappling with, and the issues of the Leon County School Board, um, the similarities and the dissimilarities of our unique positions relative to the usurp, usurp, the usurping of local authority and autonomy of our local governments in this community.
Madam County Attorney.
Okay, so the scope of the shade meeting can be litigation strategy or settlement discussions related to this litigation. That's the only topic we can discuss in a shade meeting, so, and that's statutory. I don't have any control over that. I can't go beyond that. That's not that I don't want to answer your questions. I just want to make sure it's very clear to anyone who's watching this, that when we hold a shade meeting, that's gonna be only what we talk about in the shade meeting.
Okay. Outside of the shade meeting, I'd like to request, uh, that your staff prepares for our board, um, a memorandum outlining the similarities and the dissimilarities of the three governments that are in Quagmire with the state of Florida related to mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. All right, so the motion for a, uh, shade meeting, uh, made by Commissioner Maddox and seconded by Commissioner Dozier, I believe. Uh, all in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Uh, any more items, Madam County Attorney?
Nothing further, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. County Administrator, any comments or discussion items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have none. I was just gonna provide a, a little bit of a follow-up there, and just to assure the, the board that really, now that we have entered into this, uh, stage of the process, that really our, our statement has been limited to the fact that the board has, um, authorized that, uh, we, uh, intend to fight and assert our legal rights and remedies available to us, um, uh, so that we can continue to, again, protect, uh, our citizens, uh, and, and to have a, uh, workforce, uh, ready to respond to the needs of our community. That's, that's pretty much it. So that's, that's what you can expect.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. All right, discussion items by Commissioners. Uh, why don't we start with, uh, Commissioner Welch?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just let you guys know I'm still here. All right, I haven't forgotten about you. I've, I'm not engaged in this conversation about the roads and the, uh, the vaccine thing. Um, I want to invite all of my colleagues and anybody in the general public to come out to, uh, Lake Kilarney on November 6th, um, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Uh, speaking of an earlier topic of cleaning up the lakes in Kilarne, we're gonna have a lake cleanup, the Kilarne Homes Association is gonna have a lake cleanup, in conjunction with the Boy Scouts of America, who are, uh, going to be collecting canned goods for second harvest. So, uh, I'm gonna be there, and I'd love it to see you guys there, too, if you so inclined. That's, uh, Saturday, November 6th, from 9:00 to 11:00. Um, I also want to, uh, I want to speak on the New Hope Cemetery item from earlier. Uh, Mr. Chair, I had asked about that. Um, I really want to commend our staff on the New Hope Cemetery issue. Um, you know, obviously, as we continue to deal with growth in the Northeast and the Walani property, you know, we're gonna encounter increasingly, I think, historic resources, things like African-American cemeteries. We have a Lake Hall Schoolhouse that I'd like to, uh, I'd like us to do something about, saving or preserving, if at all possible, but I think that, you know, we've got, the, the Bradford Family Cemetery is located, not many people realize, right in, basically in the parking lot of the old Coles in Bradfordville. We have another African-American cemetery right there between the Target and the, um, Public Shopping Center in Bradfordville. And I just think that, uh, to, to Mr. Mann, and at least Ms. Anderson earlier that spoke, um, our staff has done a really good job with the New Hope Cemetery at Testorina Baptist Church, in how they've worked with the stakeholders, how they have come up with real solutions, uh, to try and preserve and save and demarcate that piece of property within a bigger property that's gonna be developed. I just think it's a great piece of public policy, and it's a commendable thing that our staff has done, working so hard, um, to, to work with everybody to, to preserve those, um, pieces of property. So, uh, other than that, Mr. Chair, I also wanted to thank our Parks and Rec staff for another phenomenal travel baseball tournament at Woodville Park this past weekend. Um, this one was, uh, very well attended with, with teams from out of the area, uh, which the previous one was mostly Tallahassee teams. We had teams from South Georgia and, uh, Central Florida in town, and I made a comment on social media how it was just really nice to see so many people out at our parks and see some license plates from other parts of the state, that that was my idea of economic development. So I see Ken in the back there, thank you for working with me and the tourist development folks to get some of those tournaments back in town, another tremendous success, and I'm positive those people were staying in our hotel rooms and eating in our restaurants. So, uh, those are some, uh, phenomenal things going on, and, um, that's all I've got for you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Cummings, ma'am.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. As this commission's representative on the Children's Services Council, I just want to report a couple items on the progress that has been made. Um, quite a bit of progress has been made to the point where we have assessed service providers that will do the gap analysis and the needs assessment, and we're at the point of, um, recommending or interviewing the last two out of, uh, a number of applicants that submitted, uh, invitations to negotiate, and the last two are Q&amp;Q research consultants out of Miami Lakes, Florida, and the other one is Public Consulting Corporation. Um, and they have 50-plus offices, including one in, in Tallahassee. We had a third, uh, entity, George Washington University, but they withdrew, um, their bid, um, recently. So we have two that we are advancing. As far as the executive director applicants for the Children's Services Council, we had close to 200, if not more than 200 applicants. We've gone through several steps in the process, and we believe that we have some really, really good criminal crop applicants that we are, are advancing. We had, what, recommended three individuals, Chris Leto's, Seka Rose Green, and Kelly Adi, all three of which has ties or live in, in Leon County. I was just told, however, during this meeting, that Kelly Adi withdrew her application. So right now, we have final interviews, and let something changes this coming Monday, uh, with Mr. Chris Leto's and Ms. Seka Rose Green. So we have, uh, made a lot of progress in that respect, and hopefully, at our next board meeting, we will be able to report who the new executive director, who we're recommending as executive director, and also the entity that will be doing the needs assessment and gap analysis for us. That's all I have. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cummings. Uh, Mr. Jackson, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, our county administrator stepped out, he must know I was gonna put him on the spot. I want to, um, recognize, uh, uh, further development, um, from Amazon. I think Commissioner Miner and I share that, um, prestigious little piece of property off of Northwest Passage, 30 acres, 3.4 million to add to the work that they're already going to do, uh, to put in the distribution center. Um, super proud of that. I think that, um, no plans have kind of been announced, but, um, I know that it's part of the, um, the operations side of what Amazon plans to do. Um, I've calculated, um, uh, 3.57, so each of you needs to raise about $510,000 in the coming weeks if, to be prepared to, uh, pay the fine. I thought I would share that with you in my, uh, math lesson for the day. Lastly, um, I wanted to talk to the county administrator about open camping on rideaways. There's several locations that are within blocks of the Carney Center. Uh, just today, um, in Commissioner Miner's, uh, district, there was a attempted arson murder where a tent was set on fire while someone was inside. Um, I'm assuming that was open camping on either public or private, um, property, but these things have started to surface much more regularly, especially on the West Side, within blocks of our sheriff's office, but more importantly, within blocks of the homeless shelter. And in some instances, they are blocking the sidewalk, and there's, um, constant panhandling. I'm not saying that I don't have a heart for the homeless, but I do believe that college students that are pedestrians or bicyclists that are using those sidewalks to get from TCC and FSU back and forth to their apartments and complexes deserves some semblance of a safety. So I don't know if that comes back to us an agenda item, um, but I know that it's become much more prevalent, um, particularly in the District 2, um, uh, zone or District 2 communities, and, uh, I am concerned. Um, I think that they may be part-time residents, or maybe they get their meals, uh, at the shelter, but then, um, after that, it becomes a public camping, um, issue. So, now that Vince is returning, I didn't hear any of that, so, uh, but anyways, uh, talking about public camping on the rideaways, um, uh, in Western, actually all over. Uh, I know that, uh, Commissioner Welch has a very, uh, magnetic case right now himself. Uh, any comment on that, Mr. Administrator?
Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, notice that we'll be bringing some options back to you in the form of an agenda item.
That's all I have.
All right. Vice Chair Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, on the issue that has been opened up, since this can has been opened by Commissioner Jackson, uh, would Commissioner Jackson also be willing to, to, to take a look at North Monroe Quarter up by I-10 and the juncture, uh, between the mall and, mm, the Walmart, I would say? Would you, could we also, in, in those corridors both have similar issues to me?
Yeah. And in fact, let me, let me jump in. Just this weekend, um, some constituents had sent me some photos of some of the debris along that area and some of the homeless camps, and over the weekend, I, I went over there and, and walked alongside the, there, at least when I was there, there were three homeless camps, um, right alongside the sidewalk next to Walmart, and then there's one on the other across, across the street. So it's, it's a, it's a problem in my district, it's a problem in many districts. I, I know Commissioner Jackson and I share some experiences regarding that. Um, one thing I did was go to the businesses surrounding those areas, handed them my business card, and asked them to contact me when they saw people coming back to their camps, so that we could, uh, provide some help to them. It's a, it's a, it's a big problem. I, I support the idea of doing some more analysis on this. Um, you know, Florida statutes have some pretty, um, uh, well-defined ideas on, on what to do about this, but I actually brought this up with the county administrator the other day, and that's when he told me that, uh, an agenda item was coming back soon, so--
And, and, and because--
Yes, Vice Chair Proctor.
I'm familiar, Mr. Chairman, that it was, it was an issue that, um, the previous commissioner for your district, uh, often, uh, had heartfelt concern for that area of North Monroe. And as our mayor now, I think that, um, in both these areas, inside this incorporated area of the city, this thing is, um, due to the safety factor, due to the numbers of crimes reported in that area, uh, due to the, uh, overall look and the, uh, the cultural transformation that is occurring. I think this is a joint city-county, uh, this is a workshop, uh, a, a, a meeting of both entities, because economics and the property value is gonna fall. The, uh, appeal of it being a commercial, um, high-tide area is gonna fall to low tide, and there's just a calamity of, um, um, major calamities which can unfold if we allow that those spots to fester without joint city, uh, health and safety, coupled with the economic decline of those areas. I, I just think it's bigger than, than that, and I'd like to, um, perhaps in that agenda item, uh, we might speak to the next step with the city, uh, and what we can do comprehensively, um, for the good of the whole community.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. That's an excellent idea. Support it 100%.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Jackson, we interrupted you, sir. Any, any other items?
Any other items?
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good discussions, a lot of issues. I think following on in the economic development vein, I think we anticipated this, but the announcement came today that our Office of Economic Vitality was honored with four awards from the International Economic Development Council. That is a significant achievement for a five-year-old organization. So congratulations to Christina Perez and her entire team. They have been working just incredibly hard to set up an organization that is responsive to a lot of different issues and challenges in our community when it comes to supporting local businesses, creating new businesses, and recruiting. So congratulations to them. We will meet again after Startup Week, and I will just flag that there are too many events in the first week to two weeks of November related to entrepreneurs and startup and a lot of different issues in our community. I would encourage everyone to look at those events. A lot of them will be virtual or hybrid, but you can really get a sense of a lot of the really amazing work being done in our community, particularly with our entrepreneurs. And with that, I'm just rounding out the topic for the evening. Our Leon County Research and Development Authority, so Innovation Park, we heard we kicked off the night with a presentation from Ron Miller, the Tech Grant Competition. It will be virtual, it's also in person. This program has awarded money for many, many years to startup businesses that we could capture and house in Leon County now for the first time. It is a remarkable event to get a snapshot of some of the incredible technology that's coming out of the universities, but also just from folks who are not attached to universities, that just have incredible ideas, and they're making it work, and they're growing businesses. So that is on the 21st of October. It's an evening event, and you can sign up online. So the Tech Grant Competition for Innovation Park, learn a little bit about some of the cool stuff happening around here. And with that, Mr. Chair, and I guess we do have a few weeks here, so happy Halloween, and everything else is going to happen in the next month, and I hope everyone enjoys it, stays safe. But as we had that little cheer at the beginning, we are doing well with COVID, and I hope we see those numbers continue to go down. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier, very much. Commissioner Maddox.
So I received a call from one of our dealerships here in town to talk about, asked me about the idea of charging stations and partnership, P3-type partnerships with local municipalities like Seattle, Tallahassee, or Leon County and providing those charging stations. I don't know if there's other things like that going on and within our state or our nation, but what I do know is that there's an increase in the purchase and use of electric vehicles. And so I don't know if I want to ask for just a conversation about it or to get something from staff to talk about if there's a presence or something of that nature. But I thought it was interesting, kind of like in the same vein as what the school board did with the natural gas facility that they have where they partner with someone else and basically takes about, I think, half or something of the profits from it or something like that. Is there some kind of way we could we could put together a program where we create charging stations for electric vehicles in a P3-type situation and be able to benefit from some of the profit of it while working with some of the landowners and within our incorporated and incorporated areas to do such a thing? So just trying to be innovative there. One thing that we talk about in MPOAC as well is CRTPA is the fact of as we move further and further away from from gas consumption, the gas tax revenues go down, we're going to have to find our turn of way to finance our roads, our road maintenance and improvement program. So, Mr. Administrator, can you speak to that real quick and see if there's if there's something out there that we can get a hold of?
Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Yeah, absolutely. As you all know, it's a it's a big emphasis in the new proposed infrastructure plan at the federal level. This is included, and it sounds like something that would make a lot of sense for us to provide as a first step, a staff analysis to bring back to you and to provide some options. Certainly, we have even things like our sustainability compact that may be a good place to have a broader discussion in the community about and bring back some recommendations to you all, but we'd be happy to start with an analysis to be brought back to you.
Right. So something of the nature of, like I said, something similar to what the school board did with the with the natural gas station. If we have, you know, landowners or dealerships or whoever that will be willing to let us put some charging stations on there, but, you know, partnering with Seattle, whoever, whenever, Taupun, whoever, to take some of those profits, I'd love for us to get involved in that. So thank you for bringing that back. Do I need a motion for an agenda item in that way, or do you just want to bring back analysis in another way?
That would be great if you could.
All right, so I'm making an agenda item to bring back some, looking to bring back an agenda item, looking at a program that would accomplish partnership with landowners as well as utilities to placing charging stations around the county that were P3 concepts. That would be my my motion.
Second. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think an agenda item is a great idea. I'm interested in the federal legislation, if there's any funding there, and I know the state has had a big emphasis on this, although they may be focused, like so many other things, south of us. And we've seen some charging stations around town. I just wanted to, if we're bringing back this agenda item, there is a group within Sustainable Tallahassee that has an electric car event every year and kind of promoting this, and they may have some information on more of the private sector. But in addition to that, I think this fits in with something that brought up briefly at a blueprint meeting a few months ago. Are there ways that we could incentivize or build in something to a new development if there's a shopping center and really encourage people to add charging stations, letting them know what resources they might have? I think we we would do well to look at our development support, I mean, our building permits and everything, and I would love for the city to look at that as well, to really incentivize more sustainable construction, other types of practices. So I see the county administrator nodding here. Commissioner Maddox, I love your motion and everything. If we could add in any of that additional information, should the staff find it, I think would help fill out our various options.
I think you put it in better, I think you worded it better than me, incentivizing those landowners as well as, or those landowners to actually look at this and do this. That's a great way to put it. So you know what we want, Mr. Administrator, all that stuff she said and I said, bringing back.
That would be included in the analysis, absolutely.
Mr. Proctor, I ain't trying to sell water, I'm trying to sell electric. But any ways that we can bring in revenues. And again, I think we have to be conscious of the fact of as time goes on and more electric and autonomous vehicles are created, the way we know about, the way we know that we maintain our roads now will be all but extinct. So we got to come up with different innovative ways to again, fund our road maintenance programs, and we can't, we can't rely on general revenue to do such a thing. So maybe this is one way that we can be innovative and try to get that done. So I look forward to that agenda item coming back and thank the board for their support on the agenda item coming back. Mr. Chair, you got a motion on the floor.
All in favor of the motion, made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner, oh, I seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7-0. Anything else, Commissioner Maddox?
Just, I enjoy doing this with you guys. It's always a pleasure, Mr. Chair. You have led a great meeting today with a bunch of complicated issues that weren't expected to be this way. So I commend you on leading us through today and look forward to continuing to serve with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Maddox, I stopped by Ford yesterday to look at that electric Mustang. It's quite the car, and you may want to stop by and look at it. It was being charged, and I feel what you're talking about, and Ford is bringing heat, and it has all the capabilities, I'm told. I didn't drive it. Commissioners, it was a good meeting. I want to thank the chairman for managing a lot of, juggling a lot of dynamics, did a great job on this evening, this afternoon. Commissioner Dozier, I was going to give you my three minutes and then, but you didn't need my three minutes. You did good. Thank you very much. Shout out to FSU and FAMU football teams. They took care of business, and it was a great, great moment out in Bragg Stadium. The Rattler Family Nation hosted, Commissioner City-County. To say thank you, we received a crowd ovation for the support of that stadium and all of those good things, and that was a class gesture coming from FAMU. Hotel price gouging is real, it's alive. Hotel price gouging around the FAMU football games, the Florida State football games. And it saddens me that no one in our community seems to have the ample juice or will to challenge the price gouging, prices of rooms and where they are set, in particular for the FAMU homecoming, are just not right. And this kind of activity and practice by hoteliers diminishes economic factors of exponential growth when many are deterred from coming to Tallahassee because they can't afford to. You can drive up, drive down, fly in, but when your hotel room exceeds your plane ticket and you got to stay two, three nights, it becomes cost prohibitive. And I just want to say that I'm very disappointed in our area hotels and what they're doing. And what y'all doing is not right. You're dead wrong. I wish you would pull up and give our community the chance to shine, to be hospitable to more people than the practices that are underway and happening. I wish the hotel industry would would pull up and do right. Tonight, we heard about the vicious dog policy, and I can't remember, I want to ask the county attorney if she would please provide that this commissioner and commissioners with the policy on vicious dogs, if we have one. It was lifted up by one of the earliest speakers. I know we have some policies, animal, but a vicious dog policy specifically, I would like to be enlightened on that on that policy. We also heard tonight the request, I think, from Ms. Valora on expungement of marijuana charges. And we have expungement for adolescents, but for adults, we don't have an expungement. I want to ask if that is accurate statement, would that expungement capacity to expunge adult convictions on marijuana, would that be by ordinance, county attorney? How could that request from the public tonight translate into a policy that we could actually, is that the state of Florida?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that this issue has come up in the past, and it was answered by the previous county attorney, Mr. Herb Tila. I believe his response was the possession and or use of marijuana is a criminal offense. The county does not have any jurisdiction jurisdiction over that issue. So I'd be happy to look into it and validate and confirm that, but I believe that's the case.
The citizen speaking to us is immersed in the areas and subjects of marijuana for a period of time. We've heard from her for a period of time. And if expungement is an option to us, can we set an ordinance? Previously, I have asked our board to consider 20 grams of possession to be a citation in various communities across Florida. 20 grams or less is like a parking ticket or is a citation, a ticket, something you pay. And if it's the will of this board, I'd like for our board to reconsider the policy of 20 grams. I know that Herb Tila, his thoughts, he's just one lawyer for counties of 67, and it's just amazing to me that the lawyer we had was, you heard his thoughts, but the lawyers of Broward, Dade, Hillsborough, and a plethora of other counties, they're thinking about the same subject, different from Herb's. We have a new lawyer, and perchance, we have a new board. And it's just in a county where so many young people come from South Florida to this city that the cities they come from, for 20 grams or less, it's a citation, but they come to Tallahassee and for saying, can go to jail and get a record. I think that we need and we ought to preserve careers, preserve futures, and to make our environment contemporary to the norms and cultural evolution that is underway. Some states have decriminalized marijuana possession totally. Washington DC, Mongols, the nation's capital, there's a lot of lawyers. I mean, just good God, so many lawyers in Washington DC, but their legal opinions are sufficient enough to just decriminalize it there. So one person's legal thought has stifled what we've done here, and we have deferred to, but there's just too many places in the galaxy where it's what it is. And I'd like to ask the board for us to take a look at making 20 grams or less a citation in Leon County for marijuana possession. I'm getting that motion.
I'll second up a discussion. I'm persuaded by this past weekend that my daughter Alabama State University's homecoming had the opportunity to visit the Legacy Museum with the title of From Slavery to Mass Incarceration. Had an opportunity to read a graphic that talked about how many of our young African-American men and women are in jail because of drug charges. Some, some, most carrying less than 20 grams. And so I'm persuaded by that and ready to have that conversation in the way of those people who may be using do not belong in a detention facility where they belong is in that rehab. And most times, they're carrying 20 grams or less. So I don't know if a dealer would be doing such, but I'm ready to have the conversation. Commissioner Proctor, I appreciate you bringing it back up, and I think it's something that we should talk about. I think times are moving, we should consider it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I fully support bringing this issue up. I think Vice Chair and I were kind of vying for our last, last time we both made motions to bring the issue up. This could have been a year and a half, two years, it was pre-COVID, so let's just date that, you know, it was a couple of years ago. Having done, I mean, I think we had a pretty good list of other cities and counties in the state that have done what you suggested, Mr. Vice Chair, but there's one really significant difference, and you may remember, this is where we got hung up. County Administrator is not invigorously right now. Those other areas of the state, they have law enforcement partners and significantly their state's attorney who support their efforts. Our state's attorney came in and said, absolutely not, no way, this isn't our wheelhouse. And I don't think he's changed his position. Now, I disagree with him on that, but for our law enforcement folks, the sheriffs, for TPD and others, they are governed by the fact that this is still a Schedule I. So I couldn't agree with you more, but I think if we bring that back for discussion, we may end up in the same place where we have to do an ordinance without the support of our law enforcement partners or the state's attorney, and then I don't think it actually works. I think that's where we were kind of left last time. Now, I would love for that issue to come up for discussion. I'd love to hear directly from the state's attorney.
I'm willing to do that, to make sure that everybody has that comfort. And while we're asking the state attorney, maybe we need to go ask the governor his opinion as well. It seems that he has a lot to tell us. And I think that once we begin to bow, defer, and I know the state's defer, and I know the state attorney don't want a particular city commissioner to be elected and thinks he should be out of office, but I don't care what he think about me. I think what I care about is providing commonsensical policy for our community. And he can take a position and vote and stand up and say, I should be put out of office. I don't have to go kiss his ring. We should make policy consistent with the order of the day and the times. And like you said, Commissioner Maddox, there's a disproportionate number of young black men charged with crimes with marijuana, my son included. So I'm damn well versed on this. I mean, personally, so. And when, you know, a kid is charged and somehow with having 21 grams, one gram more than a misdemeanor, I mean, I feel a certain kind of way. Because I don't know what the difference in 21 grams and 20 grams and what's a, what's the word, felony. You know, this is crazy. So Campbell is going to always seek to prosecute what we want to do. My job is to give some sense of balance in our world and don't give Campbell or anybody just a chance to just ravish and destroy the lives of young black men and white men and boys and girls. This is a college town. We ought to do what we can to protect them. I'm well beyond a workshop. I'm ready to do something. But if you need to go there, I will yield to you, Commissioner Maddox, because I respect you. I modify my motion for a workshop.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. You're most kind. Thank you. I've got Commissioner Cummings in the queue, and then Commissioner Maddox.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, I appreciate Commissioner Proctor raising this issue, this issue, especially since the taxpayers, other citizens of Florida decriminalize the use of marijuana for, you know, medical purposes. And, you know, we've got stores all over, every corner you turn, even here in Tallahassee. So I'm certainly interested in decriminalizing, you know, the recreational use of marijuana. We have a lot of our young people that are incarcerated. But I'm also concerned, Commissioner Proctor, and like to see what other counties have done, if anything, because it's my understanding, I mean, and I know because I've represented individuals, that this is statutory, Florida statute that pretty much governs, you know, the use, the grams, you know, what have you. So I would clearly be interested in seeing what other counties have done, if anything. And one of the things I'm also encouraged about is when we look at our legislative priorities, priorities, that was one of the issues as part of the legislative priorities as well, when we had the workshop a couple of weeks ago. But I'd certainly be interested in, you know, workshop, if we want to do it that way. But it's just several aspects of enforcement and the law and the number of grams and what have you. And it's statutory. I'm not sure if, from a county standpoint, if we have jurisdiction or authority, which is why I would be interested in seeing what other counties have done, if they've done something to address that issue from the county level and not the state legislative level. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Madam County Attorney, the state attorney is charged to enforce laws in the hierarchy in which they are written, correct? So fed, state, local, correct?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Federal, state, local, that's correct.
So how have those municipalities that Commissioner Proctor mentioned been able to enact these programs whereby the state attorney or sheriff or whoever has chosen to move in other directions or to honor the local civil citation program?
I would assume that it's been by agreement because in terms of the enforcement and prosecutorial discretion, those are within the purview of law enforcement and the state attorney's office.
Thank you. So that is why, again, I get where you're coming from, Commissioner Proctor. But one thing I know about our state attorney and our sheriff and our police chief is that they understand the hierarchy and they try their best they can to enforce from that level. And I can't, I can't blame them. So to make a decision here amongst us and say to them, you're going to do this, when really, in all actuality, we have no, we have no way to make them do anything because we're at the bottom of the totem pole when it comes to the ordinance that we may set or the precedent we may set when it comes to this issue. It's almost like preemption. So what I'm asking is, and the reason I'm glad you did the workshop is if we can all get at the table and talk about this thing and come up with some kind of agreement that we can all come, we can all say, okay, this is what we're going to do. And even if we can't, at least we can talk it out to know what the facts are, then maybe, just maybe, we can move the ball forward. And if we can't, we can't. But at least we had the conversation in a way that made it possible. So I respect the state attorney, I respect the sheriff, I respect the sheriff as well as the police chief and the jobs that they have to do and the things that they have to honor in the way of doing those jobs. And I'm not, though I have my own beliefs about this issue, I respect his beliefs and his ways, his way of enforcing it. And quite frankly, if he comes in here and says, I'm not going to do it, then I'm going to ask him, okay, then what do you suggest that we do do in order for us to deal with this issue? Because we all know it's an issue. And we can, and we'll make an agreement on how we move forward. But I'm not, I'm not at all into trying to force something that's not going to happen. Because we can, again, last thing I'm gonna say, Mr. Chair, is we can go, we can come up here, we can set that ordinance, we can say it's going to be a program, and then the state attorney can say, well, the federal law says this, the state law says this, and your ordinance says this, I'm gonna go by the federal law. And our ordinance means absolutely nothing. The sheriff can do the same thing. I'm gonna go by state and federal law. Our ordinance absolutely means nothing. It takes an agreement amongst those three partners in order for it to mean something. That's what happened in other municipalities. So that's why I'm interested in having a workshop. I look forward to the conversation and education and moving forward in that way. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Cummings, did you have some files?
Yes, just real briefly, Mr. Chair, one of the things that has been done very successfully here in Leon County with the state attorney's office is the various intervention programs. And those have been implemented pursuant to the law. Say, for instance, first, a first time offender, we can place them in an intervention program where if they successfully complete the program, they don't have a record. And in some programs, they don't even have to move to have their, their record expunged at all because it's something that's done automatically. So I would think, I would think maybe specifically as it deals with marijuana and the fact that you have possessed a certain amount of grams of marijuana, some programs could be implemented specific for that, especially for first time offenders, which we already pretty much have a program that deals with diverting those first time offenders. So perhaps maybe not changing the law, but implementing something locally that would assist our young people. Because, I mean, it's pretty much across the board as far as the usage.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Cummings. Vice Chair Proctor, it's your choice. Would you like to consider amending the motion for a workshop? Or do you want to stay with the agenda?
I think the comfort level for the workshop, for the board is where everybody, I mean, my sense of where we are. So I would amend to workshop and then we'll see if an agenda could come out of that.
I think that sounds good. Commissioner Maddox, you seconded the original motion. You can second this one too, right? Okay. All in favor of the motion to have a workshop on this issue, please signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Vice Chair Proctor, you have a more thing, right?
Yes, sir. And I just note that some years ago, the only time that we've ever, that I can remember, got pushed back was when we were told that we had to, that we could not prohibit people shooting a gun across the street from the park. The state got kind of strong on us about shooting guns across the street in the park and that we couldn't regulate that. That was, that was, you know. And we find ourselves again under a different kind of threat. And to the notion of, we got different mask policies. The state got some, each school district got some, each county. That's exactly what marijuana is in Florida, just like the mask policy, just a hodgepodge going all kinds of places. My final ask tonight is ankle bracelets are faulty. I'd like the county administrator to look into the issue of the contract, which was reported to us that the contractors are under the state's contract. And in previous years, we have contracted with different ankle bracelet companies, either through the Mr. Sladen's office or some other format. But this issue has come before the Public Safety Council multiple times. So to hear that we don't have a private contractor, but we're dealing with the state's contractor, I'd like to know what is the status? And if these bracelets are going off and people sitting in their living rooms and getting arrested because of a faulty bracelet, that we did the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, and it said, for liberty and justice for all, that just ain't true. That just ain't true. Take your hand down off your heart. It ain't true. And if we have people and equipment is malfunctioning, and what has been the number, and who has been picked up, how many pickups have occurred, and what has been the disposition of those cases relative to those pickups for faulty bracelet? Because we can't, we can't negotiate. We should not have a contractor whose equipment is costing the loss of lives. And then finally, finally on that, it's a number of people out there who cannot post a simple low bond to get out of jail. And it costs our citizens, Mr. Administrator, it's about $90 a night to stay out there at McNeil's Hotel. About $90 a night to stay at McNeil's Hotel. And some people, if they had $90, they could walk out and go home, but they just can't. And that's an issue that is right, commissioners. And I think while we look at it in the Public Safety Commission, I believe that the county in that we fund the jail, we pay for its overrun, if they have any, we pay for any expansion, modification, we pay for that. And I think that commissioners, I'm asking if you all would endorse the administrator doing a comprehensive report on bail, at what level people getting stuck in the system and just can't get out for $100, I mean, $200. And we end up paying. My final point on this, young lady was arrested some years ago for open, open, open container violation. I finally got a call after 38 days, and she didn't have $50 to get out of jail. And I managed to work it out, $50, but over 85 cent can of beer. The taxpayers paid 30 some days for her to stay in jail, over one can of beer. That's the kind of stuff that comes to our attention when we're meeting this public safety. And I'd just like to ask y'all, so I make that motion, that we get a thorough report on jail detainments, what's going on, give us a deep down look at what is occurring in our jail. Yesterday, New York Times front page story was on the Rikers Island jail in New York, which is just totally out of control. And it was a heart-wrenching read to look at the state of, that's my motion, Mr. Chairman, we take a deep dive to look at jail demographics and all of that stuff.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Commissioner Maddox.
I think Commissioner, Commissioner Dozier, I believe when he was NACO president, we looked at bail reform, which is talking about Commissioner Proctor, I think we had looked at it before, but I think it's a great idea to bring it back up. So I'll second your motion to look at, say it one more time. What was the motion again?
Bail, issues which are prohibiting people getting out, the low line fruit of people who are out there for nonviolent offenses, what are our numbers stacking up, and why do we have 1,000 people out there on any given day?
Yeah. I'll second the motion, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I think you're still the PSCC chair, correct? Yeah, so that's right in your privacy. So I'll second that and look forward to come back from the county administrator. That's a report on agenda item.
I think, yes, what you think that should be a report, agenda item, or what?
Mr. County Administrator.
You know, when it started, on the, on the issue of the malfunction of the bracelet bracelets on our contractors, I guess in pre-trial and probation, that might have simply been an issue that I provide a report to you all, especially if, you know, there wasn't many issues. But now bringing up some of these policy issues relative to bail and others, it's probably an agenda.
Or, Vincent, would you, would you prefer, I mean, there's so many issues in that. I mean, workshop actually might be.
Whatever's the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see that go workshop because
I'll second that.
This is one area which Commissioner Cummings is probably, you know, tick, 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 tick top, has questions born from years and years of working in the, interacting with the criminal justice system. So just with respect to her career passion, and the years in which I've served, you've allowed me to serve as chairman of the Public Safety Council, and to give me a chance to bring our Public Safety Council members here for that workshop. And that council is comprised of the state attorney, the public defender, the police chief, the sheriff, and NAMI representation, and just a big broad of a number of people who, and our charge is to keep the jail's population loved. And sometimes I wish that y'all could hear the information that we receive. But it's very important, I think, that a workshop allows for all of us to interact and get brought up to speed with one of the larger items which we fund every year, and that's the jail. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's it. Good night.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. So any comments or discussion on the motion on the floor? All right. Motion made by Vice Chair Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox for a workshop on this. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, if I'm understanding this correctly, bail, ankle bracelets were brought up. The workshop is more general about jail population, right?
That's my understanding, right?
All of that.
Vice Chair Proctor.
Yeah, just holistic review.
Okay. If we are going to take that opportunity to look at that issue, and we have heard in the updates for Sheriff McDeal, time and again, about his efforts to work with reentry coalition, others, in a meeting that he and I had, I think, this summer, he really articulated some other issues that kind of are next steps to think about, workforce issues and training and other things. All of that does deal with population because it's the reentry piece, right? So if Commissioner Proctor or Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioner Maddox were willing, maybe we could get a sense from the sheriff as to kind of what other issues might be on that agenda. Let him tell us about some of those programs that he's working on and some of the things that he's seeing in trends and other things like that. That may already be what's on your mind, but I just, I, well, just focus on our population at the detention center. And there are issues with folks going in who can't get bail, can't pay the court fees, whatever that might be. But we also have a big reentry issue, and we're trying to solve that. And that's not necessarily something, I mean, we're working on that in a lot of different ways, through CHSP programs and other things like that. But I think it's something the sheriff has touched on a lot of times. So if we're gonna, we're gonna ask him to come in and have that conversation, I think there's a lot more that we could kind of explore during that day that would fill out those things that he's sharing with us at his annual reports. Mr. County Administrator, am I on track with that based on what we've heard from the sheriff in the past?
Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got that, and we'll make sure we work closely with the sheriff's office in developing those materials.
And, and, Miss Administrator, one third of that population is mentally challenged as well.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox? Say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Anything else, Vice Chair Proctor?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be quick. Okay, I'll be, I'll be quick. I want to thank the board for earlier this year approving the creation of a North Monroe Task Force comprised of citizens. I'm proud to say that that task force has met four times in public meetings and is now, as we speak, drafting their recommendations. So in those recommendations, if you remember, the scope of the task force mission was to address homelessness issues and find ways to help folks that are struggling with homelessness along North Monroe, come up with ideas and methods to possibly reduce crime in the area along that corridor, and then finding also ways and recommendations to increase public and private investment along North Monroe. Those are the three components of their charge. So they are working on that right now. I think we'll be getting that report sent to us, delivered to us soon. If not November, it'll be December. So I want to thank all of you for your support on that. They've been working very hard. It's a very diverse group. It's not been a rubber stamp task force at all. They argue, they have heated discussions, and that's just what we want. So I want to let you all know about that. I went to the volunteer fire truck roundup last Saturday at Tom Brown Park. Really good turnout. I brought one of my daughters, my three-year-old. I think she had a good time, although she's focused entirely and solely on getting a snow cone. But aside from that, I think she had a really good time. Yeah. And then on October 1st, Commissioner Cummings and I attended the Capitol lighting ceremony hosted by the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council. And Kelly O'Rourke was here, as you all remember, and spoke about it for a few minutes. Really important issue, along with breast cancer awareness, the month of October is increasing awareness on domestic violence. Nearly 40% of women and nearly 30% of men in Florida have experienced intimate partner dating and sexual violence, as well as stalking in their lifetimes. And the pandemic's only made it worse. So just wanted to thank Kelly O'Rourke and the DVCC, Refuge House, and the sheriff's office, TPD, and all the other partners that have been working to increase awareness on domestic violence. And with that, I am done. Any last comments for the good of the order? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night. Drive safely.